Brian Truppa.
Here.
Samantha Bynum.
Here.
Joe Bozzi.
Here.
Dennis Schmansky.
Here.
Deborah Eddy.
Here.
Bonnie McNair Slater.
Here.
Approval or amendments to the agenda?
Make the motion, go ahead and approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agendas for tonight, all in favor?
Aye.
Approval of minutes, November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and two seconds to approve the minutes of November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
The Clay Township zoning board of appeals, or ZBA, primarily addresses practical difficulty based on lot size, location, shape, or contour, and/or location of existing buildings. We are guided by section twenty-seven point zero five of ordinance number one twenty-six. There are five members on the ZBA, all of whom are present tonight. At least three members must hold a firm authority for a motion to grant a variance. Three members constitute a quorum. Each appeal before the ZBA will have a public hearing, at which time the applicant will first present his or her case, and a public comment regarding this issue will follow. During this time, members of the board may ask questions of clarification. If a particular point gets belated, the chairperson has the right to limit comments. When the public hearing is closed, the board will move on to the deliberation of the particular variance request. If the applicant should disagree with the board's decision, he or she has the right to take it to circuit court within thirty days of the decision. When your appeal hearing is concluded, you are welcome to leave or stay as you wish. Okay, new business. Yep, go ahead, Dennis.
I'll be outside, just text me.
I'll text you when you're ready, okay?
Yep.
Thank you. Alright, so new business, we're gonna go Jay ZBA, two thousand twenty-one dash zero two-two at four seven nine one South Channel, as a representative. Please come onto the podium, state your name. Address and the reason you're here.
David Cano, four seven nine one South Channel Drive. The reason I'm here is to request a an additional foot and height variance for our garage. This was due to late change to our trusses, and we didn't realize the extent of the height it would be increased to. So our median went from fifteen to sixteen. As a result, we still believe we're still within the code, because the distance we are from the property line is four foot, which would grant us an additional height for the median. And I know at one point it was for discussion where the property lies that is also within the zoning rights.
Okay, stay there for one second. Anyone wish to speak and open a public comment on this hearing? On this case? Sir, if you step down for one second, we might have questions for you in a second. Come on up, state your name and address, please.
Roy Kepin, address forty-seven sixty-eight Green Drive, I'm the neighbor next door. How did this happen to begin with, that it's too high?
You're asking me?
Yes, I'm asking the board.
Well, we're not here to, we're here to hear why it's too high right now. We didn't, we didn't build it, we didn't approve anything for it, so we're, he's here to ask us.
Your board built it.
We didn't build any of it.
Yes, he did.
No, I didn't.
I'm the neighbor, I've watched him build it.
But this board right here didn't, didn't build it, right?
No, I know, I understand that, Dennis did. But my question is, this is the second garage that he's built. The first one was a different inspector, Sid, I don't know if you remember him or not. I complained and complained about the garage they built. Well, it wasn't a garage, he wanted to build a guest house. And Gary, the inspector now says he can't do that. So Gary made him get a new survey. Well, the survey was wrong, and I had my surveyor again, and he dug up stakes from when I bought the property in ninety-three, and his survey was at least a foot off. The garage that first built, which I mentioned is the guest house, is two foot from my property. That's not including the overhang. This here is not four foot, it's three foot with a twenty-four foot overhang. When it rains like right now, my property's all flooded. I mentioned to him about putting in some kind of drainage, he claims it's my problem. I just wanna know, nothing happened with the first garage, and I complained and I complained. Gary says that they, he, they gave him the wrong survey. That's how he got away with the first garage. Now, with this, is the overhang included with the three foot?
No.
It's not, so he can have a two-foot overhang on my property, and when it rains, all the water comes on my property.
Well, if he's three feet off of the property line and a two-foot overhang, is that over your property?
Yes.
How?
And the first garage, which is the, was supposed to be the guest house, is two foot from my property line, not including the overhang. And on top of that, when I had Gary out there complaining and I showed him about my survey, here he is putting in a deck on the building that's two foot from my property, and he didn't even have a permit for it. I just wanna know how this all happens. What good is a permit?
That's why he's here.
No, that's all I have to say for right now.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wants to speak? Alright, gonna close, close public comment. Let me step back out for a second. Do you have a survey done on this property?
Yes.
Current?
I'm not sure what you mean current.
Like this year?
For the building of the garage, yes.
What about for the whole prop, piece of property that you own?
A land survey was done previously when there was building.
When was that done?
Um, I'm not sure, but not this year.
How do you know that? Sir, when was your survey? When was your survey? What's the date on your survey? This year?
Yeah, cause I, you said there's two garages? Cause I only see one garage on this survey.
He wanted to build a guest house on the house side.
Okay, I was, I was just looking for another building.
Right, yeah.
But he had one two foot from the property line.
Yeah, but it's not built, so.
It's not what?
It's not there.
So is the structure that you are, um, what, what is the structure that you're building that you're seeking a variance for?
That's for the garage.
Okay, and, um, did you seek approval prior to, um, did you seek a permit to build the garage?
Yes.
Okay.
But, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Okay.
Did you see the memo from Gary?
That's all my questions.
Okay.
Can I ask the building inspector one question, please? Hang on one second. Sorry, Gary. Besides Gary, besides going in between the, the boundaries, because I know that's a civil issue, we have our survey right here. Is it, according to you, is that three feet right now?
Right now.
According to this survey?
According to that survey, which does not show this accessory structure on it, we, we questioned it, and that's why, you know, I had him provide me with a survey, because the neighbor was concerned that it wasn't proper. Things didn't line up, in my opinion. When the neighbor did get his own survey, and actually that surveyor dug up the pins in the ground that were old pins, they're not the new that was just put up. The way things lined up, I believe the neighbor's survey to be the truer survey. And then, you know, even with that, it still shows it's about four foot away from the property line. The new build, not the, the old one, not the existing one that was built along with the house. That one, according, you know, if, if we believe the neighbor's survey to be true, is definitely encroaches that three-foot line. But to me, that's water underneath the bridge, and, you know, we're not really discussing that one at this point.
So, the claim is the misprint in our ordinance? For, one, one is right, one is wrong, right?
Correct.
Is that, okay.
And really, from my standpoint, the bottom, the bottom line is, is that, did he meet the three-foot setback? If I look at both surveys, I say, yes, it did.
Okay.
The biggest problem, and I think you've read my
We all read it.
Memo to you, is that, um, the biggest problem is that we made a change, we revised the plan. We didn't bring that to the billing department, we didn't say, hey, we think this will work better for us, can we revise it? At that point, we bring it into plan review, we look at it, and then it would've been very easy to say, you're too high. So let's squat that pitch back down to, to a four twelve, and then you'll meet it, and still be able to have your storage trusses up there, and still be able to store stuff in there, because originally it was a, a, just a pre-engineered standard trust, and they wanted to do some storage, not a problem, right and wrong way. But they didn't bring it to the billing department, ends up that it's a foot too high. So that's really what's at issue, yes. Do we look at three point two four, which I told them right out the gate, that, that that's not correct? And I am working with our new planner to make sure that we do get that change. I did bring that change up a year, over a year ago, with the previous planners, and they were supposed to fix it, but, you know, they're no longer here, so that never got resolved at that time. But eighteen oh three, that's where it also talks about the heights, and that was in there before the two four one, you know, to show what really the height exceptions are.
Right. I've always read it as two feet, you gain one foot. This misprint is gonna... Thanks, Gary. Like?
Like bad advice from a builder?
Totally agree, totally agree. I'm not, I can't, I can't argue, argue that, but if you were to read that ordinance, just that ordinance, you would read it as he was okay.
Right.
Do you understand what ordinance your builder was referencing?
So, the ordinance that we talked about, I thought, was the three point two four, I believe, is the number off the top of my head. But the point was that, initially, right, I guess the requirement is three feet off the property line, and because where their additional foot is where, would allow us to go an additional foot higher, in the mean. That's my understanding.
So if three feet is the minimum, you have to go off of it. If you would've went two feet additional, you could've went one foot higher. So you technically need to be five feet to go that one foot that you are. One of our ordinance says one foot equals one foot, meaning four foot, you would be able to be at your sixteen-foot height that you're at. So there's a misprint in our ordinances. When did you realize the misprint? When did, when were you, when were you advised that, that we, you, or builder was reading the wrong ordinance?
So initially, we didn't think the height of the garage would increase to the extent that it did. And again, it was a last second change of trusses. So when we looked at it until later, as they were being built, we, we thought that we'd be okay. It was my understanding.
Was there drawings on this, or you just changed the trusses at construction?
I'm, I'm sorry?
Were there drawings prior to building it, or did you change the trusses at construction?
If I understand properly, um, we drew up the plan of what we intended to build, and then we did have a slight change in the trusses, where it changed our outcome for the height.
And no one measured the height?
Measured it.
On the drawing?
No, it's just something that I didn't...
Did you just go off what your builder was telling you?
We, the way we saw the dimensions of the trusses, we thought we would be okay. We, we didn't consult.
When you looked at the, the trusses, with the, the new trusses, you had a drawing, didn't you? And you see what it was before and after?
Right, yeah, yeah.
Did you see the height change?
Um, yes, but I'm, I, maybe I didn't understand it properly, because, again, I didn't... Initially, we didn't think the height of the garage was gonna change the magnitude it did, I think we misread when we compared the two trusses in terms of how much it was really increasing.
The trusses specifically, or the drawing with the change of the trusses?
Um, the drawings comparing like the, like the, what we initially thought we wanted, like the, those trusses, and then comparing it side by side with...
Side by side as actual pieces or actual drawing?
No, like the drawing. But...
But you never seen the height then when your actual drawings to the two trusses?
I'm sorry.
You didn't see the height change with the two trusses at that time, but you knew the changes with the truss were something?
Yeah, but I tried to compare like the height and the way I, I didn't fully understand it, so I misunderstood where we were going with the, with the heights, so, um... How do I explain this? So I didn't understand, I misinterpreted the drawings when I looked at them, the way I did it.
Are the wall heights to, to print?
Um, we filed the revised plan, I, I, I can recall hand, if it changed, okay.
Oh, they're at seven foot then? Is that what the wall should be?
Wow, unless they're at ten foot, a little over ten foot. I'm trying to find out when you realized, you know what I mean? Like if you were advised that, hey, you, you, you're, you're four feet away from your property line, you're allowed to go up one foot. That's what somebody read, I, I get that, okay? I wanna know when that was, like, was it now, like, two weeks ago, when you, when, or whenever Gary realized that you were too high? Or was it when you ordered the trusses?
No, so the trusses, again, was like a very spur of the moment. We didn't have time, because they already ordered them, so they hadn't started, so we changed the trusses on the fly. And then after that, we were trying to figure out, making sure everything's okay. At first, we thought we were okay, and then later we looked at it and realized that we're gonna be around, you know, sixteen. I think it was a bit less than my, but to round up to sixteen, and that's when we were trying to figure out if we meet or not.
When was that about, roughly? Not trying to play investigator, I just wanna...
Right, uh, at that time, the trusses had came, but they're already like being put on, and that's kind of when we realized that, you know? And then it was when I looked in the rulebook, and one of the first, like, that's the first one that I came across through, regarded to the height. And that's when I felt comfortable, I thought we were still within meeting. I, I think the mistake I realized that I've made, right, was we didn't revise the plans and reach out to Gary fast enough to that one, and for that, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for him? Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I've already closed it, I already closed probably, is there some, is something changed? I mean, you can come up and say one, one thing, but not...
I just wanted to mention that they keep saying the new garage that we're talking about is four foot from the property line, it's not. Not according to my survey, and I measured it before I come here tonight. It's three foot.
To your survey?
Yeah, and now, and you got a two-foot overhang.
Okay, thank you. The overhang doesn't count, you guys?
I guess in my mind, this is definitely a unique situation.
Yes.
I, I think the discrepancy in the ordinance and just the the issues with the builder, I think, to me, that's enough to show practical difficulty in brand of variance.
Well, we're gonna eliminate that loophole.
Mm-hmm, right.
You know, that, that will...
So I mean, this is gonna, we can grant this one under this issue, but hopefully, before we get another one of these, the ordinance will be corrected, and we won't have this issue.
Right.
And I'm thinking, it probably has to go back to planning.
It will.
But Gary's, Gary's on that, right, you're on, you're on the fix.
Yes.
So I have a question, if if three, two, four, two, that height exception is obviously different from eighteen oh three two, how do we know, know which one to follow?
I think it has to do with also, um, I'm sorry. Three point oh one point six also states the same as eighteen. But somehow, three two four, I think, got inserted in there, and it's just wrong.
Okay.
Yeah, I think they made an attempt to change it, but didn't catch it everywhere in the ordinance, so there's this discrepancy. So right now, both are actually valid?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I was gonna say. Either or.
It's even worse though, it says in, in the height, you know, exceptions.
Right.
One plus one, you know? I do believe it was interpreted wrong, and I, I can't second your motion, but I agree with...
I will make a motion to approve the variance based on the discrepancy in the ordinance and the unique situations surrounding this case in particular, with the recommendation that the ordinances get reviewed and corrected.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a second. Our motion and a second, roll call, please.
Samantha Bynum?
Yes.
Joseph Bozzi?
Yes.
Deborah Eddy?
Yes.
Bonnie McNair Slater, yes. Brian Truppa?
Yes. Granted. So it will be changed, so that ordinance, this won't happen again. Back to you. As far as property lines, you guys, that's civil, that's not us in any way, shape, or form. Sorry that we had a discrepancy in our ordinances. Please, if there's any changes to plans from now on, let's talk to the building officials here to, you know, help you get through any changes. Just a misfortune on this, this part right here. Okay, so moving on, no more new business? What's that? What is that, what are these things right here?
That's the same page.
All the same?
It's the application on the survey.
Oh, okay, I'm like, are we reviewing these, or?
Well, it's just the application and the survey.
No, I, I didn't know if we had to go over them, though, that's why. Whoops, one back end. Call me, come on, spell check.
I wonder if there's a way we can speed that up.
One back end, my goodness.
Sorry to get this to the planning commission, hey? Yeah, I know. I should know better.
Hey, call me. We always are.
That's true. Oh, God, come on. Thirty-five years later.
Where's the lawyers, though? Okay, alright, Dennis, we're... Okay, we're back, new business is, there's nothing, so unfinished business, I don't think I have any.
No.
Report from planning commission.
Okay, a couple things. Our last two meetings were canceled. Second of all, let's see, there's a fence issue.
Is that supposed to be coming back?
Oh, Jesus mercy. So that's coming back to us. For the first time, I've just heard about a plan for recreation department, I have no idea, so I have to call, I already, what was this?
A building, or, or a building, or a?
It's a some sort of plan he thinks we should be working on, and I have no idea.
Oh, cool.
Oh, it's probably the recreation master plan.
Okay.
Perfect.
You have to do it every five years, and you have to keep it updated in order to get grants from the DNR.
Oh, isn't that okay, thank you.
She'll help out, she's bored lately. She's on the committee. She will be. We're gonna have to already seize this meeting.
The last thing is that we were, the trustees asked us, or have asked planning to hold a public hearing on reducing the number of the commissioners from nine to seven. And so that is a special meeting that's coming up next Tuesday.
Pros and cons.
He had to appoint himself on the board.
No, that's not true.
Well, that's, that's what he read the other day, but the, no, hey, I was there.
I watched it, you're wrong, he didn't say that.
Not, not here, I'm talking about at the, the, when she read the one, the nineteen thirty-nine, whatever.
That's a rumor. I mean, he does not want... That's ridiculous.
Why would you wanna reduce the board when there's so many people that wanna be on the board? It's the only time ever that gets reduced is when you can't get a quorum. You know, there's always, there's, everybody wants to be on a, or there's always... Well, I mean, they're there, well, I...
I guess to me, that's something for the board of trustees.
I guess to me, that's something for the board of trustees.
Right.
So, it's going to be interesting.
Is it not in our ordinance?
Nope.
So, that's my report. So, interesting.
Okay, any other to review? So, we have ZBA training session. Hang on one second. Should we get rid of like public comments and just get rid of this meeting? And just have the ZB, I mean?
Yeah.
There's no one in the audience. Hold one second, please. Public comments, anything? Hearing none, nobody's in the audience. Close public comments.
They can motionally close this meeting.
Actually, it's on the agenda, you have to do this...
Yeah, let's just keep this open, and then, but no one can speak. Except for us.
I'll steam line up.
You ready?
I'm ready.
Well, Gary, do you wanna talk to the department? Well, good evening, everyone. I wanted to introduce myself. I'm the fairly new township planner, or new, old new planner, let's leave it that way. I've been in this business for over forty-five years. Spent twenty-four years with Clinton Township as their planner, planning director. Left the township, went to become the Macomb County Department of Planning and Economic Development Director. Stayed there for about fifteen years, retired in two thousand and sixteen, and been doing some consulting in my spare time, which has turned out to be quite a bit of time. And I've recently brought on two other people to help me, so we're, we're getting quite busy. But which is good. But, so I'm, I'm a planner. I, besides doing planning for all those years, I've had the fortune to teach at Oakland University, city planning, in their Master's of Public Administration program. I've done that up until last year, when I decided to pass that up too. And also, I teach for MSU Extension Services Citizen Planning courses. So, a lot of this information I've, that you're gonna hear tonight, comes from both of those sources. And a lot of it also comes from the Michigan Association of Planning, which you all could be members, and I'm not certain if you are. But it's, it's something to look into, and it's good training. I'm gonna give a, a basic overview of the planning and zoning process, how it affects here in Clay Township. And, you know, a lot of it doesn't pertain to you, but it gives you a great overview of how you fit into the whole process in itself. And you have a very important role, one of the most important roles in the process. But it's a unique role, unique from some of the others. So, if we can move on a little bit, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the history of planning, the enabling legislation, how the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals is created, what allows it to be created, all the roles and responsibilities to your groups and some of the others, so you can know how to interrelate, how the master plan affects what you do. You may think, oh, we don't deal with the master plan, that's the planning commission. But the master plan does affect zoning in quite a number of ways, and we'll talk about that. What is the appeals process? What are you allowed to do? Some things you might find out tonight that you are allowed to do, that you never had, have done, and probably never will, but they're a lot more important, not important, but a lot more, a broader scope than just giving dimensional variances like we did tonight. Hold, hold, you know, recommendations, and hold, hold effective meetings to reduce your risk management and that, so you're not, the township's not sued, you're pretty much not affected by that, because you have immunity in most cases. But, you know, how the township can not be sued, so we're gonna talk a little bit about that. Okay, the history of planning goes back a long ways, it goes back into, you know, the Adams and Franklin type days back in then. And, you know, it developed on how do we use property? And there's, even today, you hear, you hear a lot of the arguments in that regard. Adams stated, John Adams stated, that he felt the property should be, land should be used how it benefits the individual, individual property rights. Or liberty can't be censured, it's my property, I can do whatever I want. But when Franklin, on the other side, says it also has to respond to societal needs. You, you, you can use your property what you want, but you have to remember that you're part of a society. You can't impact your neighbors adversely. Or, in many extreme cases, your property can be condemned for the good of the public. That's taken on a bigger twist over the years. It used to be, what was the best part of the, what was for the good of the public? Was it to build schools? Was it to put roads, six ninety-six through Centerline, M fifty-nine through Utica, those kinda thing? Taken, but recently, not recently, within the last twenty years, it has even gone to promoting economic development. The Pol Town plant in Detroit was a, was used as a reason, economic development was used as a reason to undertake eminent domain, to take people's property. There is a large case, the Supreme Court, it's called, the book, there's a book about it, a movie actually about it called The Little Pink House. And it was Keelow versus State of Connecticut. And what they did is Pfizer was going, took over, wanted to build a huge complex in Connecticut, in this town, in this small town of, I forget the name, but, in this cottage community. And they, they, the state went and was condemning houses. And what happened is this lady named Susan Keelow fought it and didn't give in to eminent domain, and ended up taking it to the Supreme Court, where she lost. The Supreme Court said that economic development and jobs is in the society's best interests, that they're allowed to take property. So, it's really moved in the direction of what Franklin had wanted. Interesting enough, after all that property was taken, and now the whole neighborhood, a very, very nice cottage-style, by-the-lake residential community was disrupted in favor of this industry for Pfizer. Pfizer never did build. And all the houses were torn down and everything, so it's, was, you know, it's still kind of a mess today. You can actually find the story or the book online, or watch the movie online, it's very interesting. In fact, I assigned that to my class. But that's, that, this, you know, what started the, like, planning, start talking about in the United States, is now, how can we use property? Is it benefit the individual, or does it benefit the, the society in general? The birth of city planning itself started in eighteen ninety-three, and that was the Chicago Columbian Exposition. It was the four-hundredth anniversary when Columbus discovered Americas. And it, but, and, and it was in Chicago, it was almost like a world's fair. And the, an architect, Burnham, developed this small area of Chicago downtown. If you've been to Chicago, down where the museums are downtown, near Soldier Field there. And at that time, they created what they called this White City, because it was all done in white tones, you know, earth tones, you see some of the pictures there a little bit, some of the areas. But so, but they were, I mean, and they showed, you know, how to lay out the streets, and how to lay out walkways to houses, or not houses, to the buildings and that. It really started city planning in the United States. Well, the first planners were basically architects and landscape architects, because it was dealt with a city beautiful movement, and they had a lot of landscaping to properties and that. Now, a short time later, or twenty-some years later, the city of New York is credited for the first zoning ordinance in the United States. And, and what they found was, there was a big concerns over the health and safety. Some of these very tall, they were building very tall buildings in the city with no setbacks on the property lines. And it was causing light not to get to the street level. It was causing, you know, without unsanitary conditions based on overcrowding. There are a lot of other problems. And, and what was also happening is there was no separation between the slider houses and where the people lived, and the industry and where people lived. And it was becoming a, a big nuisance, and more, and a very health problem, health issue for diseases and that. So, what New York did is they, they started looking at the community, and they started segregating, separating or segregating the, the community into various districts, and specified within that district what, what types of uses. It was very general. It was like residential can be in this part, and industrial should be on the outside and that. But most importantly, what they did, because of those heights of those buildings, the, the taller the building you have, the further it needed to be away from the street to allow sunlight to reach into the area, reach down to the street. And that is why, when you look at a lot of the old buildings that were constructed back in the twenties and thirties, even Detroit, the base is a lot bigger, and the taller they go up, the buildings go in a little bit. Now, some of that's for structural support, I'll give you that. But it's the reason, because the taller you are, you need more sunlight to get down. So, zoning started, you know, they, they decided that that was a good way, based on health and safety, to regulate their community. Now, everything has a, a problem, and, you know, the attorneys got together and worked with the, and, you know, I shouldn't say that. Village of Euclid had a problem, because Amber Realty, excuse me, had the problem, because the village of Euclid followed the same model as New York did. And then the attorneys got involved and said, hey, this is a, a, this hurts our property rights. We no longer can get the highest and best use. But basically, Amber Realty wanted all the area to be developed as industrial, and the village of Euclid said, nah, we don't think so. And they created six use districts, three height districts, and four area districts. And there's sixty-eight acres of land, and it was restricted to residential, according to the village of Euclid's ordinance. Well, the Amber Realty company sued the village. It went all the way to, basically, they sued the village because they thought it was reducing their property values, it probably was. And it went all the way to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court held that, based on the health, safety, and welfare, that the community could regulate zoning. That is why, in most of your zoning ordinance, if you look into them, or look in one of the communities, there's always a preamble up there that says, this ordinance was created based on the health, safety, and welfare, is to protect health, safety, and welfare. So, that'll start. Now, there's also a concept from Euclidean zoning, which is basically our zoning ordinances that also have today, that have separate districts with separate uses, and separate setbacks and that. And that's called the Euclidean zoning district. And that comes from the village of Euclid back in the eighteen, nineteen twenty-six. Just to give you a little history of how things have transpired. Okay. So, we are all creatures of the state. Communities can only undertake what the state allows us to. So, back in nineteen thirty-one, Michigan decided, okay, we're gonna allow communities, you know, this, remember, more, we're getting interested in planning and zoning their communities for health, safety, and welfare. In forty thirty-one, Michigan adapt, adopted a planning enabling legislation, which basically created planning commissions and allowed for planning. In forty-one, Michigan adopted the enabling, zoning enabling legislation, which allowed cities and villages the right to zone. They couldn't, you, you can't do much unless you're enabled by the state as a community. They filed in fifty-nine with the, the enabling legislation for townships. Then in, and that was what we abided by, that act itself. And then in two thousand and six, the state, after extensive review, took all those enabling legislations, and they were literally different for communities. Cities were different than townships, villages were different than both. And they all had different types of regulations of what you cannot do. And they consolidated it into the zoning enabling act of of two thousand and six, and the planning enabling act of two thousand and eight. One of the issues, I, I didn't hear all the conversation, but the, the zoning ordinance is being changed for the planning commission. One of the things that's being changed here is it was never adopted as required by the zoning enabling legislation in two thousand and eight, or the planning enabling legislation in two thousand and six, to re-adopt the planning commission under the new enabling act. And all communities were given to two thousand and eleven to do it. And most haven't done it. And, you know, the attorneys, our attorney has recommended here that, in order to stay out of trouble, you might wanna re-adopt that. So, that's one of the changes of that ordinance that's coming about, specifically to adopt the, the two thou, the planning commission under the two thousand and eight planning enabling act. Now, both these, these acts are probably twenty to thirty pages long. They're very good in the fact that they prescribe what you cannot do, or what you can do. For example, the planning act talks about the master plan, and what needs to be in the master plan, and who needs to review the master plan, and how many days of a public hearing, and how many days for this, and how many days for that. The zoning enabling act talks the same thing about how do you adopt the zoning ordinance, an amendment to the zoning ordinance. What is the zoning board of appeals allowed or not allowed to do? How many days does the zoning board of appeals have to advertise their meeting? This kinda thing. And, and those are all prescribed in the zoning enabling and planning enabling act. If you don't have a copy, you might want to. It really gives you an insight of a lot of things that you can and cannot do. One of the major components of the planning act was, it called, it created a uniform name of a master plan, which is really no big deal, but some communities call it a comprehensive plans, and it's still throughout the United States in some communities, but they call it a master plan. It leaves out the responsibilities of the planning commission. The planning commission can, is the responsible body for preparing a master plan. It allows master plan to have sub-plans within a master plan. That was never really considered before, but it does, so you could have a Dixie Highway corridor plan, or Harson's Island plan within the Clay Township plan. It requires now that there's coordination between a master plan and a zoning ordinance, so that it's not looked at independently. It requires that when you do adopt a master plan, you have to notify all your adjacent communities, give them a period of time in which to review it before they can adopt it. It's actually sixty-three days, and if anybody can ever tell me where sixty-three days comes up, I'd buy 'em dinner, because I cannot figure it out, nobody I've ever asked can figure it out. Might be thirty, sixty, ninety, but sixty-three, it's nine weeks. I don't, what's the big deal, I don't get it. But they say sixty-three days. Master plan has to be reviewed every five years. Doesn't have to be re-adopted, I mean, it doesn't have to be redone, or even amended, but the planning commission has to at least look at it every five years. And if they feel that changes are not necessary, they can re-adopt it. I can tell you that I've worked in communities that haven't adopted their, re-adopted their master plan since nineteen eighty-nine. Two of them, same year, I don't know why, but they haven't done it, just because they, I guess they don't feel it's important. But, when we go to the zoning enabling act and the master plan, I mean, the planning enabling act, it says that you can undertake zoning if you don't have a master plan anymore. So, your master plan is not valid, you face some kinda liability if you're zoning properties with a master plan that, that allows you to zone. So, you know, there could be challenges in court that way. So, you know, communities that aren't, don't have an updated master plan are playing with fire when they're approving projects with, and that, because you really don't have the authority to do zoning without it. Now, the zoning enabling act talks about the responsibilities of the zoning board of appeals. Establishes procedures like indicated to amend the zoning ordinance, requirements for issuing variances, talks about different types of zonings, conditional zonings, talks about special land uses, plan unit development, and it exempts certain uses from local control. A lot of that has to do for, I mean, pertains to the planning commission, but you should just understand that there are some things that the, the enabling act clauses do. Conditional zoning is basically a developer will offer, you know, will say, hey, I'd like to rezone my property from residential to commercial, and I'm going to build this and only this. And here's the picture, and here's the plans. And you condition that rezoning based on those plans. And if that developer does not build accordingly, the zoning would revert back. Under conventional rezonings, you give a B-three zoning or commercial zoning, and they tell you they're gonna build this nice little bank or something. They walk away, sell the property, get hit by a car, whatever, anything that's allowed in that district can go in there. So, communities were complaining, they gave, you know, they didn't have enough latitude. So, the state created the conditional zoning to allow rezonings based on a set of plans. The caveat, though, is, planning commission, township board cannot ask for a conditional zoning. It has, has to be offered by the applicant. Now, you can always go to the back room and say, it'd be really nice if you did that, you probably have better chances. But you can't really say publicly to ask them for that. Special land use is basically something that's not always allowed in an area, but in certain cases it is. For example, churches in a residential district. They're typically in a residential district, but I wouldn't want them in the middle of my subdivision. So, what it does, it says, you're allowed a church in a residential district, provided there's these special conditions. there's these special conditions. You're on a major road, you're, you know, within 500 feet of whatever, something like that. It applies conditions. Fast food restaurant, maybe the same thing. You're allowed in a commercial district, but it needs to be at least 500 feet from a residential home, because of the speakers, or things like that. If they meet those conditions, and meet the dimensional requirements of the zoning ordinance, then you can meet it. You would approve it. Now, I said there's certain things that townships and local governments cannot control anymore, or control with, I mean, very minimally, and there are things like manufactured housing, agriculture, foster care homes, group homes, daycare, schools, wetlands, mining, I mean, mineral resources, landfills, hazardous waste, gun clubs, prison, wells, telecommunications equipment. As you may have heard, the state is also looking at taking local control away from us on short-term rentals, and they're involved in mining right now, too. Now, anybody hazard a guess why they've taken these away?
Special interest groups?
Well, I'm sorry.
Special interest groups?
Yeah, that's probably the biggest reason. The other thing is, communities probably want approval out of them, and they know it. Nobody's gonna want a prison in their neighborhood. And, you know, they probably, there's some other things. Nobody wants a landfill and that. So, these kind of controls have been taken away from the local communities, and they continue to look at other things to take away. Bonnie was absolutely right, especially on the short-term rentals, that's their realtors' group that doesn't want the communities to regulate them. Mobile homes was pretty much the same thing, or manufactured housing back in the 70s, when that was the first that I recall being taken away from local units of government, was because the manufactured housing community and the realtors were tired of being what they thought being eliminated from the communities. Okay. Let's go into the roles and responsibilities, and how each of your roles. You think of planning similar to civics in government, that there's this three branches of government. You've got the legislative, the executive, and the judicial. The executive, well, the legislative is township board. They create legislation, they make the appointments, they adopt ordinances, and they're the only ones gonna adopt and regulate an ordinance. They can do zoning reviews, and they can do master plans, which is not required. Now, the planning commission is more like the administrative group. They're the ones that are overseeing the day-to-day operations of planning, along with the staff, and, you know, planners, and building officials, and everybody else is involved. Now, the planning commission, by enabling legislation, is responsible for preparing the master plan. The planning commission is responsible for getting involved in creating a zoning ordinance or zoning ordinance amendments. They can't adopt it, though. There's such thing as site plan review, and a site plan review is to look at a set of plans, to determine compliance with the zoning ordinance, and that's done by the planning commission typically. They can do subdivision reviews, and special land use reviews. These are more administrative functions, because you can think about it, if it meets your ordinance, you gotta, you know, you're not creating ordinance, you're just determining whether it meets your ordinance, so you approve it. Now, the board of appeals yourselves is our judicial branch of government, okay? You have the right to review variances, variances like you saw tonight. Dimensional variances, wants to go a little bit higher than allowed, you know, a garage that wants to be closer to the property line. Somebody that wants to build and can't put in enough parking spaces, they want a reduction in that. Those are dimensional-type variances, which, you know, you're allowed to give under certain circumstances. There's also such thing as a use variance. A use variance is granting a use is typically not allowed in a district. I do not believe that Clay Township has the right to do that. When the enabling legislation took effect, it specifically said that only cities could grant use variances. I don't know why only cities could, but townships who had granted use variances or had it in their legislation, prior to the act being implemented, can still do it if they wish. Now, what is a use variance? I mean, it's really a way around a rezoning, and it's not really done too often. Somebody could come in and say, my property's residential, but I want to put it in that bank. Will you allow me to put it in a bank on residential property? You typically would say, oh, first of all, we're not allowed to do it, but if those that are allowed would say, why? Why don't you rezone the property? You know, I would think appropriately to rezone the property. And it's hard for me to even come up with instances where a use variance would be appropriate. There is one that I'm aware of, it's on County Line Road in Casco, north of, north of 26 Mile Road, north of Marine City Highway. There's a mobile home community that was there, and is there, and there's a joint set property that had an office building there, that was built as an office for the mobile home community. And they were able to get that under the Mobile Home Act. And it was more than just an office for that community, it was an office for a lot of their communities. Well, that has since been abandoned, so there's a vacant office building there on mobile home park land. So, the option is to, well, first of all, they can't occupy it because it's non-conforming now. The option is to tear it down, make them rezone, and would you want office? To me, that would be a spot zoning in the middle of a residential area. So, that might be a case, if they were allowed to do it, that you may want to say, we'll allow you that use there and only that use, but that's use variances, and, like I said, I do not believe that Clay Township has that provision.
What about, you know, the big thing now is this marijuana deal, getting special land use permits and whatnot. How would that affect here, if that were brought up? Or could it?
You don't have to run marijuana under special land use, you can allow it under permitted use. You can, are we talking about caregivers? Or the large-scale?
Shivers are people that you love. The shops, they sell it.
Okay.
Like they have in Ferndale.
Yeah. I can tell you, that's an allowed use in some of those communities, okay? It doesn't even have to go, it's just a principal use permitted. Other communities have decided, we're gonna make it a special land use, which gives you a lot more discretion to assure that it's appropriate, it's not too close to a school or a house, and they're gonna implement measures. So you can really do it both ways, but yeah, that's another thing. You could put in there under special land use, for sure. There's not a lot of communities around here that are actually allowing those, those types of facilities. I know New Baltimore, Lenox, Harrison, but I don't think other, in St. Clair, from what I heard, are even getting involved in the licensing of facilities. Everybody's overthrown now with the caregivers, and how they're moving in, buying houses, I mean, I know of a place in Romeo that somebody bought a $300,000 house for the sole purpose of just growing marijuana as a caregiver in there. A lot of communities now are looking at how to waste or regulate that. Some are doing it as home occupation, only allowed as, I mean, part of your house or accessory structures, and some are saying that's only allowed in industrial districts, subject to special land use. So, there's a number of ways you can do it, but it's created a major problem. So one of the things that the state now is, because of the problems that communities are doing, and having, and some pushback they're getting, is looking to, they're gonna start regulating marijuana facilities and take it away from the communities, which I don't know will pass, but they're looking at that now. So you, besides variances, you have appeal of decisions. Gary goes out and denies somebody a porch, and he denies it because it's too close to the property line. And the applicant says, I don't think it is, look in my survey. There we go. It isn't, you know, they can appeal that decision to you, and you would make the interpretation on how to appeal that. In Lenox Township right now, there is a case where a, somebody wanted to come in and do some wetland mitigation bank. A wetland mitigation bank is where they develop a wetland, this one's about 400 acres, and when somebody destroys a wetland in another part of the region, the state makes them create a wetland somewhere else within a certain distance, so they would buy the rights to a portion of the wetlands they're building, you know, they want to build in Lenox. Well, Lenox had already several of these and decided to turn it down. They're appealing that decision to the zoning board of appeals. So they're appealing a planning commission decision to the zoning board of appeals. That deals a lot with the court case of Paragon Properties versus the city of Novi, which says that before you can sue, you have to exhaust all your administrative rights, and that's what they're doing. Okay? They're gonna get denied from the zoning board of appeals, and they'll have the rights and then proceed. But this is another thing that you guys could, might someday have a reason, they're appealing a planning commission decision for you. The other one is interpretations, and that could have come up tonight if they would have wanted to, although, you know, we don't really ever recommend, but they could have, the applicant could have come to you and say, hey, look, this section says this, and this section says that. Which one do you want me to follow? And you would have had to make that determination, which one you think is more appropriate. You couldn't say, we're gonna send it back. You'll want to send it back, you'll eventually say that, for changes, but they could force you to make an interpretation of which one you think is more appropriate in this instance. That sometimes happens.
Steve, is that an individual situation?
Yes, definitely. So those are the, you know, those are like the three different types of decisions you can make. So let's talk just briefly about the master plan, I mean, because that starts to give the basis of the zoning ordinance, and the zoning ordinance, which is what creates you, the enabling legislation. Master plan, and I'm not gonna go through all these, because a master plan is usually just a document that sets a policy for the township, looks about the future, I mean, talks about the future, where you want to go, by examining what your present conditions are, where your residential is, where your industrial is, and that, and it starts to, and looks at your environmental conditions, and you develop a plan, how you want your community to grow. Okay? So it's an official document, a guide to development in the future, that, like I said, is done every five years or looked at. And it, under statutory, it provides a statutory foundation upon which the zoning decisions are made. Another, like I said, you're gonna develop a zoning ordinance that's consistent with the goals of the master plan. The master plan says the northwest area needs to be residential, you wouldn't have a zoning ordinance that says that zones that area as industrial, it's pretty simple, but they just want consistency, and the state now requires you to look at both to make sure they're consistent. This is some of the things that are in the master plan. You know, you're required to talk about land use, and housing, and transportation, community facilities, capital improvements. You're required to seek public input a number of ways. You're required to have a future land use map, and then periodically you need to maintain it and review it. This is Clay Township's master plan, recently done, or this is the future land use map of the master plan, excuse me. It kind of gives you a general idea, and this is very general, of what land uses go where. That opposed, if I can just move a little bit further to the bottom one there, which is the zoning map, which is much more specific. So each of those areas, I know it's hard to see, but each of those areas up in the master plan map that shows residential, may have two or three different zoning districts applied to them, but that consistency needs to be spelled out in your master plan. Let's see if I can go back now. So zoning, like I said, is an exercise the community can undertake to regulate land based on health, safety, and welfare. Okay? You divide the community up into districts, and you can have permitted, conditional, special land uses within that district. Usually, you regulate land size, lot size, building placements, setbacks, parking, heights, that kind of thing. That's Euclidean zoning. There are also, you know, other forms of zoning, performance-based zoning, and the biggest one now is form-based zoning, that some communities are using, which basically looks at the development based on what it's going to look like, and its impact to the surrounding area. For example, if you had a building that was setback, if you made sure it was setback a certain distance, and it had certain overhangs, and it had a walk-up to it, and it had necessary parking, in downtown setting, do you care if it's used for an office, or residential, or what? As long as you make certain parameters of the environment, and the parameters of land use and that. Some communities are starting to adopt these types of form-based codes, especially in their downtown areas. I find it interesting when I'm with somebody, and you pull up to an area where you say, do you like this area, or do you like that old area over there? And they'll say, I like this, and you'll say, well, you know why? Because there's no setbacks. You know, drive to, you see the, I mean, New Baltimore, where the buildings are up close, and you're driving down the street, or these nice downtown settings in Romeo, or Rochester, or some of the other communities up in this area, that, you know, you really say, that's nice, you know, it's a walkable area, everything looks good, it has all awnings, the signs are all the same, they have jut-outs in the upper floors, or insets in the upper floors. You know, that wouldn't meet any of our zoning ordinances here today. So communities are starting to look at form-based codes. And as we said, the purpose of zoning is health, safety, and welfare, protection of resources, preventing nuisances for your neighbors, that kind of thing. What's in a zoning ordinance? There's always definitions, so they can explain the terms. There's general provisions that apply to everything. Noise, odor, pollution. There are your different zoning districts. City of Detroit, I think, has like 130 different zoning districts. Some of my communities have seven or eight. I mean, it depends on your size, the, you know, the complexity of your community. Typically lesser is better, I always thought. You have a schedule of regulations. Schedule of regulations just says, within that zoning district, what are your setbacks? What are the things you can do? What's the height and that? You have your development requirements, site plan approval, special land use, those kind of things, what do you need to do? You have your non-conforming regulations, because if you adopt a zoning ordinance, there's always gonna be something that was there prior that may not meet your ordinance. How are you gonna deal with those? If they're destroyed by 50%, do they have to rebuild? Can they go to the zoning board of appeals and get a variance? These are the things that your zoning ordinance would tell you. You have administration enforcement. Administration typically talks about the planning commission, enforcement talks about the building department, and the code enforcement, if that's what you have. Then you have a whole section devoted to the zoning board of appeals, talks about the membership of the ZVA, what they can grant, what they cannot, and in many cases, it also talks about the procedures that need to be followed, and typically representing the zoning enabling act that we mentioned before. Okay? How did the two documents differ? And I still get this from long-term planning commissions, especially, they'll say, what is the master plan zone the property has? Well, the master plan doesn't zone. Master plan just shows you a future land use. So the zoning map shows you the zoning. So, if we go through this, the master plan is a policy document that reflects the needs and desires of the community, and the zoning ordinance is the implementation tool of the master plan. Okay? You got what you're, you know what you're gonna build, or where you want it to be, now you develop a zoning ordinance to help implement that. The master plan is a guide, there's no legal standing to it, other than you need to have one, but the zoning ordinance is law. The master plan is adopted by the planning commission, that's what the state requires. The zoning ordinance is adopted by the master plan, by the township board, because it's an ordinance. Only legislative bodies can approve an ordinance. Typically, the master plan shows how land is to be used in the future, and the zoning ordinance tells you specifically what land is, how it's being regulated today. So the appropriate question always is, what does the zoning map say, or how is it zoned? When you're looking at rezonings, or a planning commission is looking at a request for rezoning, they'll typically say, what does the master plan show for that property? Is it an area that we envision commercial? If it is, they might approve it, or should approve it. If it's not, they probably won't. Just this shows you the difference. For example, in agriculture, you may have an AG zoning, or, you know, things like that, and you may have, in the residential, you may have one, two, three, four different zonings. This shows you that they're a little bit different in how to regulate them. Not all zoning districts are the same. In fact, I can't, when I was in Macomb County, we actually looked at everybody's zoning ordinance, to see if we could find any kind of consistency, because developers like consistency, especially economic development, when somebody was coming in from, you know, another state or another country, and they wanted to develop, you know, they, you know, if you go here, you need this district, if you go there, you need this district, if you go here, they don't allow that. So we were trying to see if we could, any way we could get some kind of consistency. We looked at it, there were dozens of different zoning ordinances, and many, many different types of districts. You know, one would call it M1, and that would allow a certain use, and the other one would call it MI1, and we'd had some that I think it wasn't, isn't legal, but there's a community in the county that doesn't even allow heavy industrial, and I think you're required to at least provide for an option of all uses. I had, one community I work in, Ray Township, has, and I've never heard of this ever, it's called industrial-residential. You can actually put a home or a factory in the same district. Kind of weird, but they thought it was a transitioning area, and they thought that specifically for landscape businesses and that, that they might want to live on the same property, so they have that. Now looking at taking that out of the ordinance, because there's been nothing but... Now looking at taking that out of the ordinance, because there's been nothing but problems. So there's nothing consistent, but, you know, you just have districts that are, you know, that fit your needs. It's that same issue. We really don't need to go into site plan review, it's basically, like I said, to look at drawings, to determine compliance when a new development comes in. Planning commission will have myself, whoever, review the site plan, I'll count the parking spaces, if it meets it, I'll visit the setbacks, I'll look at the height, you know, then I can certify to them that at minimally, at minimum, it meets the zoning ordinance, and you have the right to approve it. Uh, where planning commissions sometimes get into trouble, is they ask for more than what the zoning allows. Uh, if the zoning ordinance says that you have to have 20 parking spaces, you can't turn around and say, but I want you to put 25 in, because I think that would be more appropriate. You can't say, I want you to put in landscaping, if it's not allowed, or not specified. A planning commission can only, under a site plan approval, approve what the ordinance allows them to do. On the contrary, if the, so if they meet the ordinance, you must approve them. Must approve them, okay? If they don't, then you don't. Now, special land use, church in a single-family subdivision or stuff, uh, you know, has to meet other kinda requirements, compatibility with the area, so the planning commission has much more discretion whether approve it. Besides being, uh, having to meet the minimum requirements of your zoning ordinance setbacks, that kinda thing, there's typically, as the state has suggested in the enabling legislation, eight different criteria that the planning commissioners should also look at. Compatibility with the area, doesn't affect increased traffic behind it significantly, all these flowery type things, that there's no right or wrong to, and the individual planning commissioners have to determine in their own mind, whether the ordinance, or whether request meets those, and then they will determine whether they should approve it. So a lot more discretionary. So what happened is, a lot of communities wanted to add discretion to theirs, and, you know, because the site plans didn't give them a lot of discretion. A lot of communities several years ago started going to all special land uses if they could, but that got a little bit cumbersome too, and now they're moving away from that, especially with the advent of conditional zonings. Uh, this just shows, you know, the site plan will show, you know, different, the buildings and that, driveways, lighting, things like that. Shows it again in a graphic format. Uh, when I review a zoning ordinance, and I need to know for a bank of what the parking is, and I go 100 to 200 square feet, or whatever it is, uh, square, figure it out, and say, hey, you meet it, or you don't. Very, very, uh, cut and dry. You see that it doesn't, or doesn't, and that's what a zoning ordinance specifically does. Now, we're getting into stuff that you do. Uh, touched upon this, but, uh, so anywhere it feels, deals with appeals, dimensional appeals particularly, like you had tonight. Interpretations, like I said, you could have had tonight, if they would have wanted to, what's right, what's wrong? Uh, and then there's, uh, I'm sorry, back up. The appeals was appeal to, of Gary's decision, or my decision, I don't think. That use is allowed in the business district, I think it's in an industrial district. They wanna appeal my decision, they come to you to make a determination. Your determination is final, okay? I can't overrule it, township board can't overrule it. Uh, interpretations is, like I indicated, the, you know, what is right, which one of these are right? I did have one of them, Clinton Township, where the building inspector was stating that in his Myacupla, a, or weather vane type thing on top of the house, had to meet this, the height, height restriction. Uh, that went to the zoning board of appeals, and they, they agreed that it, uh, they didn't really overrule the, the building inspector as much as they suggested that it should be allowed, and the township ended up amending the zoning ordinance, kinda like you guys did tonight. And then other duties as prescribed in your ordinance, okay? So what might those be? Well, you may have the right to determine whether non-conformal use can be allowed to exist. You might, under ordinance, be allowed to, uh, determine a sign variance. For example, not all communities have their sign requirements in a zoning ordinance, some have separate ordinances for signs, so it's not subject to the planning commission or zoning board of appeals, or review, but it could be in there that they would send those appeals to the zoning board of appeals, or there may be a separate sign review board. Those are the types of things, if it's, if it's specifically prescribed, you might be being allowed to do it. Okay. And your interpretations, they should be narrow and practical, this is all common sense stuff. Uh, you should kinda look back and say, what do you think that intent was? Maybe ask the planner, the attorney, something to look at past ordinances for you, to see where was the mistake? Maybe it was, I mean, for example, the, the two figures we had tonight, maybe that mistake wasn't there in the ordinance before this was redone. Maybe you went back into the 1980s ordinance, you see that they were both the same, that's kinda thing, so you review the history. Uh, if you're looking at property line, or zonings itself, uh, what it's, what's the property really zoned, you look at maps, you look at pass maps. I told this story to the planning commission, I gave a similar talk to, years ago, and I started, there was these rub-on patterns called zipitone, wax-based patterns, and zoning maps were actually, you would cut these little things with your X-acto knife, and put these little sticky things on each parcel, to Debbie's, nodding her head, she's here, and they put these little sticky things on parcels, and that would be, on a Mylar, plastic Mylar type sheet, and that would be your, your zoning map. Well, those things after a few years would sometimes fall off, you say, oh, was that zoned? And so you'd have to go back and look at previous maps, but sometimes they would go to the planning commission, oh, I don't remember. Planning commission cannot rezone property, I mean, the zoning board of appeals cannot rezone property, you guys knew that. Uh, administrative appeals, pretty much touched upon that, just, you know, base your decisions on fact, if you do get those, very rare though. Uh, let's talk about dimensional variances, because that's what you're gonna get 99% of the time. I'm sure I'm preaching to the choir, because you guys are, you know, seem well-informed, but, you know, dimensional variances have to be unique to the property, okay? They shouldn't affect, adversely affect surrounding or adjacent properties. The need for a variance can't be self-created. Right? You know, I wanna build my house bigger, so I need a setback from the side property line, because I want it to be 4,000 square feet. That's self-created, okay? The variance is the minimum necessary, okay, to meet the condition, so if there's something that you think that, you know, there's a reason to give them that variance. Let's say, for example, they had an irregularly shaped lot, and they wanted to go within a foot of the property line, you say, well, you know what, I understand that you might not be able to meet the ordinance, but you could still keep five feet away, and not, you know, be harmed by it, so you could do something like that, the minimum necessary.
Are you allowed to suggest?
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
So if we have an idea, or they come up in front of us, and we, we, we see a way it could all work somehow, so we can suggest that?
Oh, absolutely, it's very appropriate.
Cause I don't think you've ever...
You can try and work out a solution with the developers, applicants, yeah. I mean, you can't coerce them, but you can certainly say, hey, did you think about this? Did you think about turning your house? Did you think about, you know, moving your driveway? Yeah.
I've done that a lot of times, indirectly, kinda, yeah.
The other thing is, it can't be, I'm sorry.
Why? We'll dump it on Gary.
Uh, they can't be economically driven. I wanna hire density. Why? Because I'm not gonna make much money, or it's not feasible if I don't. Nobody's required by law to get the highest and best use of their property, okay? You, I mean, you gotta stick with the, the guidelines of the zoning ordinance, and should. Uh, it shouldn't be recurring in nature, you shouldn't be asking, I mean, you shouldn't be seeing the same variance time after time. If you did, what do you do? You refer to the planning commission, like you did today.
What if we get boat houses all the time, and we send it back to the planning commission, and we still get boat houses?
Well, then, you got an issue with the planning commission.
I think this is our first meeting about boat houses.
If you have a lot of people coming in and saying, I can't meet the side yard setback requirements, over and over again, you might wanna say to the planning commission, will you look at the side yard setback requirements, where it's an issue? Those are the kinda things, okay? So your decision principles are based on things like, the various, not intended to allow property owners to circumvent the ordinance, they just can't do it because they want to. The variance granted with little or no justification may encourage others to avoid compliance, I mean, you gotta, you've gotta be careful, you can't set precedence there, and the granting unwanted variances, unwarranted variances, a long-term effect on shifting zoning policy. So if you keep on granting them, then basically you're usurping the powers of the zoning ordinance, so you gotta be careful. So, you can do, you can review administrative appeals, I talked about decisions of the planning commission, turning down a site plan, administrative review appeals of the planning planner, building official, code enforcement officer. Uh, you can do an appeal to a special land use, if the planning commission turns down a special land use, you, they can come to you, but only if it's allowed in the zoning ordinance. And I forgot to look before I got here, if those types of appeals are specifically permitted, it has to say that. Why, only, the only answer I can give you is because that's what the enabling legislation said.
Well, I've got it right here, if you wanna look at it.
The, uh...
2016 Enabling Act for zoning?
No, I need the zoning ordinance under special land use approval, that's what I need, yeah. That will say that the planning commission can review a variance if authorized in the zoning ordinance. Guidelines, uh, the planning, ZBA must determine if the decision was reached following proper procedures, in fact, if so, the decision must be held, so in other words, if Gary interpreted it correctly, in your mind, you gotta, you, you agree. You can't re-put another decision on that, though. If Gary says that, uh, he doesn't meet the height, based on the coupla, and you can either say yes or no, you can't say, we're going to change the zoning ordinance to do this, or we're not gonna count couplas, but we're gonna count something else, or we're gonna allow a reduction in the height, or measure height from halfway up, or something. You can't create ordinance, but you can just determine compliance, or determine whether his decision was appropriate. Dimensional variances have to be unique to the property, definitely have to be unique to the property. What conditions are there? Was there a waterway that goes through? Is it an irregularly shaped lot? Why can't they meet those, okay? Can't be self-created, can't be economically driven, okay? Primary purpose of the zoning board of appeals is uphold of requirements of the zoning ordinance, you all know that, except in unusual circumstances, unique to the conditions of the property. It is not the job of the ZBA to help the applicant find a way around the ordinance, you can work with them to, if you feel there's a hardship, but you can't say, you know, you don't have a hardship, but if you say this to us, we'll think maybe there's a hardship. You don't wanna do that. Uh, incorrect reasons for granting a variance? Well, nobody objected, they'll tell you that. Well, I, all my neighbors are happy, they don't care. Uh, the ordinance is too strict? Well, maybe it is, but you have to change your ordinance, you shouldn't, you know. We must give it to them, or they will move. We've gave this variance before. You might have, you might have given a sign height variance before, but that property may have been well below grade level of the street, there were appropriate reasons for that. And the next one is high, and all those things, you might have, you might have given a variance of a porch, or a front yard setback, but the other one, one you granted, who might have had all these houses out in front of them, existing homes, and it didn't make any difference, and this one doesn't, so that's really not a valid reason to give it. We know that they, uh, they would do a good job, and won't harm the surrounding properties. That, you know, might help if you're, they legitimately have a hardship, but it's not gonna help in your decisions, and if they don't, then it shouldn't. Uh, they already have a building permit, that's the big one. You, just because they have a building permit, courts have decided that they are not required to build, you can tell them that there was an error, there was a mix-up, they don't meet the ordinance, it wasn't caught, whatever it was, they're not entitled to build, okay?
What happens if they build without a building permit?
Uh, then they go to court. You take them to court, nine times out of...
I mean, first day of season. That we're, they're coming in front of us after it's already done.
Yeah. You don't have to prove it, certainly don't have to prove it, and you can allow the township to take them to court. Most cases, the judge will say, let's come out with a reasonable solution, we're not gonna make a tear it down, but once in a while, they'll say, hey, tear it down. I know of a builder, I'm not gonna name his name, and this happened, he's, I don't even think he's around anymore, it was a very big building company, not the one Debbie worked with, in Clinton Township, that, uh, somehow didn't realize that they put an extra 16-unit apartment building in their complex. Yeah, and believe it or not, none of the five building inspectors that were surveying that large development even caught it.
Hmm.
Mm-hmm, yeah, go figure. Uh, but when we went back and did the compliance with the zoning ordinance, when it's ready to get a certificate of occupancy, we'd go back and look to make sure everything meets the zoning or, I mean, the site plan. Well, what's that? Well, I don't know, you know? They just got away with it.
Must've fallen off the Mylar.
I'm sorry, must've fallen off the Mylar, yeah.
So our minor, minor, those minor things are nothing compared to the 16...
How about that one guy in Romeo that built his house, it was a mansion?
Yeah.
And he lost, they took it to, I think, the Michigan Supreme Court, near the pyramid of your...
You'll win, if you have the money and guts to do it, guts and money, most importantly, to do it.
You did win.
In Clinton Township case, this was a, a very famous builder in the area, I shouldn't say famous, well-known builder in the area, that a project probably gave contributions or whatever, they just let it go, they didn't wanna do anything. I think I went in the next day and said, I wanna put up a sign in the township, says, welcome to Clinton Township, a politically planned community.
Good.
I did, but I was there long enough, I didn't think I was gonna get fired. All right.
Bet the money and steam out.
All right, I gotta get a couple of things here, uh, there's a couple of scenarios, okay? We're gonna talk about variance request number one, parking in the front yard setback. I pulled this from Lennox. The Lennox Township zoning ordinance does not permit planning, parking within the 20, required 25-foot front yard setback, not allowed to park within 25-foot from the property line in the front yard. However, because of the following, the shell depth of the property, the lot, we as the owner, we're on a corner also, so they have two frontages, there is existing utility easement that traverses the property, and our corporate policy requires all of our restaurants to be similar design, we are requesting this variance. Would you grant it? If not, what would you look at? Any ideas?
Say it has practical difficulty, unique situation, they're on...
Yeah, do you see some practical difficulties there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, you got the...
Yeah.
You got the practical difficulties, yeah.
I guess I would have to see if their corporate policy, I mean, I've heard that many times, their corporate policy, but then you really push back, and their corporate policy can be changed.
Yeah.
So if that policy could be changed, then that kind of negates the other factors.
Okay, yep. So, you know, really, you're, as a planning, as a zoning board of appeals, you're gonna look more at the, the unique circumstances of the property, instead of the corporate policy, yeah. Yeah, I have so many people...
But is it their corporate policy that's causing the unique circumstance?
That's true, yeah, that's a good point. All right, so variance number two, this again from Lennox, too. Uh, the ordinance requires that the signs in the commercial general, which is basically a B3 district here, uh, have a maximum area of 32 square feet, as large a sign can be, 32 square feet per side, okay? And a maximum height of 10 feet from the ground level, okay? Billy's Burgers would like to have a sign similar to Tony's Tacos down the road. Tony's Tacos has a sign that's 20 feet tall and 75-foot in area. Billy's Burgers is asking for the same thing, what do you do?
Deny it.
Deny.
What?
Deny.
Deny, unless there's somewhere, I mean, a unique, if the circumstances are similar, why did they get it? Yeah. You'd have to look at the circumstances of why the...
My guess would be that Tony's Tacos is non-conforming under a prior ordinance.
That's probably right, too, yeah, they're, they were built before the ordinance, mm-hmm. You've done this before.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So we're gonna, just real general now, just in order so you're not gonna get sued, the township's not gonna sue, and I know, I've, I mean, I've read some of your minutes and stuff, and I know you guys are very good at this, but, you know, you comply, you know, in order to make effective decisions, you're prepared, you deliberate properly, you document your decisions, okay? Uh, you just follow the rules, your, your public hearing rules and everything, and that, that, that makes, you know, once you do that, your, the courts will typically side with you if you follow... you follow the proper procedural requirements. Okay? Types of decisions, we already talked about that. Gathering information. Your initial contacts, you do with application forms. You don't deal as much as this as the staff does, but the staff should ever answer questions from memory. And when that gets good, go around and haunt them unless they're sure. Most of the information they provide should be on the forms, you know, and they say, what's my timing? I mean, if I get in, am I when? Am I going to be on the next agenda? Well, here's the thing, read this over, here's our requirements. And, you know, they should be noting all contacts. You in particular, somebody contacts you ahead of time about a variance, you should really make it part of the record. There's applications, or it's application deadlines. That's all things where the staff are doing. They're following the rules, the regulations, and the enabling legislation, so that's all good. You can't visit property or access property unless you're given permission. Probably everybody knows that, you can't go on there. Since avoid ex parte contacts, basically, yeah.
Let's go back to that one. Don't we get permission once they fill out that application?
If they do, and they sign it, yeah, then you can go on. If you don't have that, you can't.
Well, what I'm saying is, we don't have to contact the homeowner, say, we're coming over to your house.
Oh, absolutely not, but some of them might not want to check that. So, just be careful.
Well, there's a box.
Yeah, but they don't have to sign it. They don't have to check it.
We have to look at that application. I was under impression, if they want this to go in front of the ZBA, we have permission to walk on their property. That's my interpretation, that's my...
Okay. I would check with your attorney, it's not my opinion.
Yeah.
Okay? I, if I wanted you to give a variance, I certainly would check that. I wouldn't make you have our time.
I don't know if there's a box on our application.
There isn't.
There is, we probably should just add it to the application.
That's where I've been going, like, since I've been on this board. You sign your name on that application, just like Gary's got the right to go to your, if you have a permit, he's allowed to go to your...
Oh, I see it.
She's saying it's...
Yeah, it is there.
Is it, if it's signed?
Yes, here, hereby, to enter the above...
So, that's where I'm getting it. There's no box.
Okay, no, they have to acknowledge it. They have to acknowledge it.
Yeah, they sign it.
If they're not acknowledging you...
They sign it. I was like...
I mean, they could also, and this would be the attorney, they could cross that out, too. And I don't think you, it's up to the attorney.
Yeah, I got you.
Okay?
All right, so I was just...
Yeah, okay.
I always just...
You know, you always want to avoid contact individually, outside, you shouldn't get together as a group, I mean, two or three, and discuss the case. You really shouldn't discuss too much of your decision to the public while you're on their property. You can ask them questions about what you're asking for, but you shouldn't say, well, I don't think you should, you're going to get it unless you do this. It might get you in a little bit of trouble eventually. I need to follow the ordinance requirements. It's just that simple, and the links. Your deliberations, you're doing it, your rules for the speakers, the rules for the decision-makers, you follow things, you do it in an open way. You shouldn't turn around and whisper to your other member about something, and then they get upset. And, you know, you could be accused of, you know, being biased and that. So, just be real careful, because they'll, they'll be out to look anything to sue you. The role of the chairman is real easy. You announce the agenda items, you talk about how you're going to hold the hearings, you facilitate the meeting, you maintain order, you follow parliamentary decisions, and you document all decisions. And that's where the strateger comes in, and you go from there. Meeting format is any format, but basically called order. Approval of the agenda, minutes, you hold the public hearing, you make the decisions. Public hearing process, we don't need to go on that, but, I mean, it's just, you're, you're open it, you, you know, you listen to the public. Typically, you only give them one time to speak, especially if you close the public hearing, but sometimes you do. You go back and say, okay, we'll answer your question if it's different. I think you did it already tonight. There was a community I was at the other night that, that it became a free-for-all, because the terminal allowed, even after the public hearing was closed, you allowed the residents to keep on screaming and asking questions. That gets totally out of hand.
And if there's offense.
Motion second should talk about the reasons. Okay? I grant the motion, you know, because it'd be based on the hardship, based on the ordinance not being correct, or discrepancies in the ordinance. You should document all that, especially if you deny them. I do not think a hardship exists, this hardship is created by the applicant. It's a financial hardship, it's not appropriate. You know, document that. Courts will look at that before they even listen to us and you. They'll look at the, the record. This just shows the documentation, how it's important. Risk management, all that was to avoid risk, not to get yourself sued, or the township sued. You know, make sure you avoid conflicts of interest, don't discuss, I mean, treat everybody fairly, consistently, you know, just work that way. Follow rules. Don't discriminate. Conflict of interest, this gets asked a lot. What's a conflict of interest? You're the applicant, obviously. You're a relative? Yep. You might be a business associate, that's definitely a conflict of interest. Or you've got very close ties to them, you're a neighbor, or something, or you're a supporter, it's very close ties to another. If you need to ask whether there's a conflict of interest, typically they say it probably is. So, what do you do? You know, you ask to be stated. The zoning board of appeals has the right to have alternates. Do you guys have alternates?
Two.
We have the alternates, okay. It allows, planning commission is allowed to have alternates, and those other strange things that I don't understand, but ZBA can, can allow, have to. And what has to happen, let's say today's case was tabled for further information, your ZBA case today, and you would have to come back next, if you couldn't make it, but, I mean, only you could deliberate, not the people that are missing tonight, only you could deliberate on that case next month. So, once you start a case, you have to continue the deliberation of that case. Pretty simple. All right. Just, we're going to finish with three ethical questions, and there's not a right or wrong answer, it just gives you an idea. You are a zoning board of appeals member who lives adjacent to the property that is subject to a rezoning from the planning commission. What do you do? Or what can you do? Remember, there's not a right or wrong answer.
It's before the planning commission and not the ZBA?
Yep.
I think you could still appear and comment as a person, but not a ZBA member.
Exactly. As a resident, you can be there. You shouldn't say, I'm on the zoning board of appeals, and we would have granted this. Yeah, exactly right. Okay? Number two, a developer asks you, a member of the zoning board of appeals, to suggest potential design firms to work on a project that he plans on developing in the township. How would you respond?
Building department might be able to help you with that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank, thanks, Debbie.
Even, yeah, I get that a lot when I'm in a community planner, you know, can you tell me a good developer, engineer?[1621.22]